Good evening and welcome to a Channel Belgrade Planning Board Clinic with KB Cog around the topic of LD 2003. And in this meeting, we have already logged in. We have Mr. George Seal and we've got Granya Shaw and Mrs. Lorna Nichols. And then person here in the town office, we have Peter Surgeon and we have Hans Armuzen and myself, Sarah Langgett. This is not a meeting, a regular meeting on the planning board. This is just a clinic session to have questions answered with KB Cog. So with that, I open the floor. You know, I didn't put a agenda together for this. I think Granya has the summary that Mr. Seal put together and there are specific questions there. So maybe we should start with that because we shared that with the entire board way back in August. What do you think, Mr. Seal?
You asking me?
Yeah, yeah, she asked, she has a copy of your summary and the questions.
Granya, if she's had an opportunity to review some of the material that we've provided her and might have some suggestions on how to proceed. Certainly think that the outcome of today should be having sort of a game plan for how we're gonna what additional information we need, what and then start making some decisions about based on that information, what we want to see for changes to the minimum lot size ordinance, possibly the multifamily dwelling ordinance and potentially, I suppose, the subdivision ordinance. But I think I prefer to turn it over to Granya at this point, if that's, if she's amenable to that.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you guys for switching to Zoom so last minute as well. So I have gone over the summary that you provided and I started going over the minimum lot size ordinance with one of my coworkers. She's helping me out so that we can try and meet your guys' deadline a little bit quicker. And so let's see.
Oh, we lost the audio.
What was that?
We looked for a minute, we lost the audio, your audio.
I don't think she was speaking. I think there's somebody in the background.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. All right.
Can you hear me?
I know again.
Okay. So I believe the first question was B three in the summary that you provided, Mr. Seal, that needing clarification on the maximum number of dwelling units per lot, and that is two. And so that's the existing dwelling unit and one accessory dwelling unit. So something I'm wanting clarification on that we are waiting on DECD to get back to us on is their definition of a dwelling unit, if that's gonna contain more than one residence. Because it is a little, it is vague that you can build an accessory dwelling unit and it doesn't state if there can be more than one residential unit inside that building. The ones that are highlighted in the summary are really dependent on the town and the town's decisions on how to amend the ordinances as far as the investigation of an existing septic system as well as what are testing. I think that's gonna really depend on what route the town goes and if the town wants to require more restrictive testing. And that is the big takeaway with LD 2003 is that municipalities, you can be less restrictive. You don't have to go word for word LD 2003. You can allow more so if you choose to.
So if I may, the, I think we, it's pretty clear we have to require testing for PIFAs though, right? In addition to the more standard water quality tests that's used on a private residential well.
I'm not sure that's actually required.
Okay, well, we can look into that. That's easy enough to resolve.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the rulemaking actually goes into any what are testing requirements.
Oh, you're right.
And then the footnote about lot sizes, the lot size does not increase.
This is under the state minimum lot size law. So the way we posed the question was if if, I mean, as written, that provides for each additional bedroom requiring an additional eight thousand square feet. Your sense is that it's no more lot size than is required for the original single-family dwelling?
Correct, because you can't, I mean, to put simply, you can't just find more lot size.
No, but some lots that are not going to be large enough, you know, older lots that are just simply not going to be large enough to accommodate another dwelling unit, even with if we're relying on the much smaller, much smaller state minimum of twenty thousand square feet versus Belgrade's of forty thousand square feet.
Right, and I mean, in that case, it is in accordance with all your setbacks and other regulations that if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit.
Yeah.
And all of your, your septic and well.
This law supersedes the town's minimum lot size regulation, lot size requirements, but it does not supersede the state's minimum lot size law, which has been around since the glaciers receded. And and that law requires a minimum of twenty thousand square feet for the first dwelling unit and eight thousand for any added bedrooms. So I'm not quite sure I agree that the lot size isn't like, for example, if somebody added one detached accessory dwelling unit, that it wouldn't be at a minimum twenty-eight thousand square feet that would be required.
In I mean, so if you have an existing lot that predated Belgrade's minimum lot size, say it was thirty thousand square feet, then if there was, if all the various qualifications are met to build an ADU, it would be allowable.
Right, it wouldn't. I mean, the, I don't remember when the minimum lot size law was enacted by the legislature, but I think it's pretty old. And I don't know if this will it looks like maybe nineteen seventy-three. So wouldn't it matter when the lot was established and developed? So if it was before seventy-three, any lot size would be okay to add a second dwelling unit to. But after nineteen seventy-three, it would have to meet the state's minimum lot size or law.
I believe that would fall under the non-conforming lots.
Okay, this is important to me and I apologize for belaboring it, but in the sense that lot size is directly related to how much of a risk new septic systems are gonna pose to neighbors' private drinking water supply wells. And the larger the lot size, the more soils we have for mitigation of the contaminants, of course, and and a more distance between the well, the receiving well and the and the source of the contamination, the leach field. So, you know, if we're gonna be confined to lot sizes even less than twenty thousand square feet with two dwelling units on it, then that makes a big difference on what else we have to do to protect drinking water.
Right. It does, and I mean, I think that is, I mean, I think everybody here is aware that this law is, has some major flaws and some major hurdles that municipalities are struggling to work around.
Yeah. No, I agree with that. It's a one shoe size fits all law that works great for Cape Elizabeth probably, but not so much for Belgrade.
So if there's all these flaws, why do we, why is the rush to conform and be in compliance? Why don't we wait for the bugs to get out of it? And what's the goal of it anyway? Because Belgrade is rural town. And once you start adding multiple multiple homes on one lot, it suddenly can be congested. And now you're talking about furnishing water supplies and sewer supplies and all of the rest of it that goes along with this law. And to me, we ought to have a way where Belgrade has sovereignty to say, no, we don't want this. Do we have anything like that? Do we have a way where we don't have to do this?
Unfortunately, no. And that is the point of the law. The point of the law is to increase housing density and to try and solve this the lack of housing that some towns are seeing and that the legislature felt was a really important issue to tackle.
Well, you know what? Portland declared themselves a sanctuary city and they can't handle all of the need. And so all of a sudden, the whole state is responsible tax-wise and this law.
I mean, unfortunately, it is, this is what was passed and we all have to do our best to work around it. There are more housing bills coming out this session. We don't know what they are yet. They might make more changes to this. They might make it easier to work around. We just don't know. And unfortunately, the state set this deadline for us, the towns, us, and the service providers, which are the regional planning organizations, to have towns in compliance. And so that's the most we can do and we're gonna do the best job we can to make sure that we find a a happy medium between what the law is saying, what Belgrade is willing to compromise on. And like it says in Mr. Seal's memo, that they can be less restrictive and it is about updating the ordinances into compliance and in a way that works with the existing town ordinances.
So what you're saying is we comply with this law and then when they ease up on the law, we'll have to come back and change it back.
It could happen.
Interesting. So what I'm hearing is that we, this law then might change coming up.
I really couldn't tell you. I saw on one of the different legislative websites that there's, I think, three or four housing bills. They're gonna be discussed. I mean, that just started, so the legislature hasn't, I don't even think probably touched on them yet with all the other bills that will be discussed. So they've already passed, I think it was LD seventeen oh six to amend this. So we do know that they amended it once. We don't know. But the important thing is, is that we have it. We get to.
Do you know who the sponsor is of that bill?
Not off the top of my head, no.
So another point of question here, Granya. Do you know if there is any way to ask the legislature for extra time or a waiver and this whole thing? Because we have, as a town, we have a different kind of concerns related to other municipalities are more like cities where cities have wastewater disposal systems and putting buildings with five stories, it won't make any difference because they have a way to handle it. We don't, we don't have a way to handle any of that. Is there any way to convey that to the legislature through through the fact that we're gonna work with you and you know, try to morph our audience as much as we can, but then take it to the point where we say, well, you know what? Beyond here is not reasonable. We can, we have to talk to somebody else in the state. Is there any way that you can help us with that?
I'm not aware of any way. I'm not aware of any way that any town and it's not just Belgrade. There are a lot of towns right now struggling to get, wrap our heads around this and figure out how to make it work with what already exists.
So do you end up, so your job is only to help the towns match the law to our ordinances and make it work? You don't, there's no allowance in your scope of work to regain feedback and send it back to the state house?
Unfortunately, no, not formally. There's no way that I, in my scope of work, to formally send feedback. There are several open houses that are being hosted by the Department of Economic and Community Development. There will be one on Thursday in Vasselboro.
Yeah, I want to that one.
Yeah, I would strongly encourage you all to go to that if you can. That will be hosted by Hillary and Ben from DECD and they're, they're a huge wealth of information.
I understand it's just a Q and A. It's not a, this is how you do it.
It's a Q and A. It's troubleshooting. They're not the ones that passed the bill.
They're not gonna what?
They're not the ones that passed the bill. They.
They will take their feedback back to the state somehow.
As much as they're able. I mean, maybe you can talk to your representatives and that might be a way, but unfortunately, right now, it's really more about just getting the ordinances in compliance.
So let's then focus on what we hear from them is in maintaining our line and seeing what is it that we gotta do, that what you suggested we gotta do to get our ordinance in compliance, even when you're, we're kind of handcuffed into doing this. All right, so are all the questions that Mr. Seal forward in his document wrapped up? Mr. Seal?
Well, I think we should allow her to continue on because there were a number of questions that we haven't gotten to yet. Before we do though, I would just mention that last summer, I had some email correspondence with Hillary and found her to be very forthright and very easy to work with and, and and of course knowledgeable. They were, they had just completed their rulemaking at that point in time and, and but which is what we're going through right now. Because that had, because you know, this, this really is more important than the law in the sense that it has more detail in it on how to comply and you know, my experience with the legislature throughout my career is one that you sometimes have to be careful what you wish for because you go back and pester them more, you might get something that's more onerous than what you started off with. I've seen that happen too, so we need to be careful of what we ask for. But because there is some flexibility in here, actually, the more I studied it, the more flexibility I I found particularly with regard to compliance with setbacks and property line setbacks and things that I thought had been, you know, waived for these affordable housing units, but don't appear to me to have been. It still comes down to some of these other questions and I think we should allow you to continue through with the rest of that, those questions since that's what we asked you to do and and see what progress we can make.
So I guess for number four, I had a question for you guys where the town ordinances may not require additional parking. I understand there was a concern about accessibility for first responders on small roads. And so what does the town do currently on those roads? Are residences required to have X number of parking places?
Belgrade doesn't have a parking or a townwide parking ordinance. It had been discussed a number of years ago, but never pursued. Partly because of a sort of related issue that had to do with a short-term rental on a town road that got congested and the fire department was afraid they couldn't get the fire truck past it, the parking. So that's why we raised that again. Some of them are town roads, some of them are private roads, you know, camp roads essentially, but have year-round residences on them.
So a workaround that I'm gonna ask about, ask DECD about when I meet with, because I'm gonna go to a different open house than the one in Vasselboro, but is that, is there a way to add wording to the to an ordinance requiring adequate space for vehicles to allow emergency ingress and egress? So it's not a parking place. It's just a place to put a vehicle if you need to get by. I don't know if they'll go for it. I don't. Because it's not parking, so I don't. I think it's worth a try.
At our last planning board meeting, the same subject kind of came off and came up in an obtuse kind of way. And Hans, please clarify if I don't get this quite right, but Hans had mentioned on state highways, there's some kind of a and these are my words, across the board ban on on parking unless, you know, specifically allowed otherwise. Is that the case? Do you know anything about that?
About?
If you don't mind, it's like our village, we have an area outside the white line for parking. There are designated parking areas along the state road. Basically, any state road, you cannot park your car. You're obstructing it. If you create an accident, you're liable for the accident, so. I think the off-street parking is gonna be one of those things we really don't need to address because it's not gonna happen. I mean, it's naturally gonna happen that they will park off the road, but what we may run into is do we want people parking on the front lawns? Do we want to create, you know, your beautification ordinance or put a clause in there that no parking on grass surfaces? Only parked on, you know, prepared surfaces. Because, you know, mud season, you park on grass, you're creating a solar erosion issue. So I think that's the way we may want to approach the parking is through an environmental
Yeah, my first concern with, and only concern really regarding parking is, is public safety and the ability of first responders to get past vehicles that might be clogging a narrow town road or, or one of these camp roads that have year-round residents on them.
So George, back to one of your first comments, if you don't mind. You said the state minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet plus eight thousand per bedroom. I've never seen or heard anything like that. It's pretty much twenty thousand square feet. And you can put as many bedrooms in that lot that the subsurface wastewater system will support. Even our minimum lot size, we don't put a cap on bedrooms as in relation to the square footage of the lot. So.
So I got that, Hans, from DHHS's website. And if you do the math, it, it's approximately correct. The, so under the state minimum lot size ordinance, you require twenty thousand square feet baseline for a single-family residence. And then if you're gonna add a bedroom, you have to provide the, let's see, so you get an allotment of, what, a hundred twenty gallons? If it's two bedrooms, it's two hundred and forty gallons.
That's for multi-unit housing. A single-family residential unit, they're saying will be deemed three hundred gallons per day. So that would be a four or five bedroom. But again, the way the rules are written for the subsurface wastewater is, you know, if lot curves for five bedrooms, you can build a five-bedroom house.
Yeah, I'm not referring to the plumbing code. I'm referring to the minimums lot size law that goes back to nineteen seventy-three.
Is that Title twelve or?
It's, yeah, Title twelve, Chapter four twenty-three A, subsection four eighty, eight oh seven dash A. And just like our minimum lot size ordinance, it has a proportional increase in lot size for you know, increases in dwellings. I don't know that it applies if you add to an.
So I'm not saying that around reading. I just see you know, one and two. Are you doing the, what is it? Two slash C, the other land use activity calculations?
What title again is that?
Title twelve, Block six, Chapter two, four twenty-three A, subsection four eighty-seven A. We've never restricted bedrooms here or done calculations to the size of system. It's actually, the system here, modern day, they're doing ninety gallons per bedroom.
Yeah, it's a hundred twenty gallons per additional bedroom. And if you do the math, that, that comes to a forty percent increase in lot area or eight thousand square feet.
Is that an old copy or is this something you just recently printed?
Recently printed. I just, I just printed it. I don't know. Well, I printed it last August is when I printed it. That was the source of the question of, you know, what lot size, what lot size applies? Of, you know, what lot size, what lot size applies? To these accessory dwelling units. Since the, the housing law doesn't, doesn't. You know, exempt them from the minimum lot size law, state law.
You said Title twelve. Chapter.
Four twenty-three A.
So Hans, you're kind of saying, and that is what I thought myself was. The. Minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet. And if you can build a septic system that will accept. Four, four bedrooms, whatever, that that's okay for minimum lot size.
Yeah, all, all large units, that they.
That's, that's what I was doing, but I don't know what. Exactly where George is getting that information, but I may be wrong, but that's what I remember. Of the law at least ten years ago.
Yeah, I mean, we have some lots here in Belgrade that you can't put a two bedroom house on because they just don't hurt. I've worked with one right now.
So can you, can you recap, recap of the answer? It will be twenty thousand square feet for, for lot size. They how many bedrooms you can put in there?
As long as the. Field will accommodate.
So Hans, what, what your, your interpretation is and your understanding is that if somebody has a twenty thousand. Square foot. Or less, you know, it was built before nineteen seventy-three, they got a postage stamp lot. With a single family residence on it. And a septic system in a private well. The. They can add. Not only it's another bedroom to that particular. Structure, but they could add a set, unattached. Accessory dwelling unit without having to have a bigger lot size than, than twenty thousand square feet.
If they can meet the setbacks and they can. Have adequate, and I think that's the wording they used, adequate subsurface wastewater treatment area.
Right, so as long as. The water, the wastewater and well water is. Quit and I think. I don't think you use the word potable, but. Adequate and can service the A D U, then it's allowable.
So lot size doesn't come into it at all. They could, they could have fifteen thousand square foot lot. If they had a highly engineered wastewater system. I mean, if they.
Right, I mean, the whole, you have to, if you keep in mind, the whole goal is to build more. Build more houses, so.
You know, if, obviously, if they had a cesspool. Hopefully that would be not found as adequate.
No, I think that's the. Going to be the biggest limit factor is the septic. There are rules in there that, the septic's can't be shared. They have to be on the lot over which they're serving and. That kind of stuff.
Yeah, I, I locate the, the title here and. I want to say that, Mr. Seal, I want to say that. Hans had a good point here, is the twenty thousand square feet is where a single family residential unit. And then for that same amount of, for that label, single family unit residential unit. Is three hundred gallons per day. And then in a multiple unit housing. Is a hundred and twenty gallons per bedroom. What is the difference between those two? Somebody can help me with that.
Multi-family would be going back to Brian's thing is, the dwelling unit is a single. Resident or two residents.
Okay.
And in the definitions, you know, there, this. Chapter, the definition, multi-dwellings, two or more. But the A D U says, well, the A D U can be in your house or attached to your house, you can divert your garage.
Yeah.
So does that make it a multi-family or is it a single family residence with an A D U? So there's slicing hairs in the definition there. Coming back to Belgrade, we have forty thousand square foot lot size. This A D U doesn't change that. Because our ordinance. Is in existence prior to the application of the A D U. So we have to worry about fitting an A D U into a forty thousand square foot lot. And again, it all comes back to will the subsurface waste system allow that? So.
So our, our, our minimum lot size is more stringent. We require twice that one, one of the state.
Exactly.
So under our, our ordinance or whatever. Law, if we had, if we have a house in town now on a twenty thousand square foot lot. Can, are they going to be able to put in the accessory dwelling unit?
Yes, yeah, if they, if they can meet all the setbacks or if they decide they want to put it in the attic or in the basement and they. Sub, you know, their septic system can accommodate the extra. Amount of bedrooms that they're adding.
And would that be true even if it was less than twenty thousand square foot lot?
Again, if, if it's an existing lot. As of the date of this bill. And it can be accommodated. You have to allow it.
I, I'm really confused now on lot size because. I read the. Rule as saying that the, both the rule and the law supersedes our. Minimum lot size for a single family residence. Is that incorrect?
Brian, do you want to clarify that one?
My understanding, my interpretation is that it is based off the town's ordinance. The rulemaking does not annul state minimum lot size. Belgrade was more restrictive, which is your right under home rule. To be more restrictive, allowing, having these bigger lot sizes. So if you have a smaller lot, I think that would go back to the non-conforming lots. But it's all going to depend if. You can meet your setback requirements, you can meet. Your septic and your well water requirements and where you're going to put the thing.
So. If. Somebody has a legally non-conforming lot, they can put a accessory dwelling unit on it. If they have a lot that was established. Under the minimum, our minimum lot size ordinance. And is a conforming lot, in other words, forty thousand square feet or larger. They can also do it. I take it the state minimum. Lot, um, lot size law, which is different. Really doesn't come into this at all?
No.
No.
Okay.
So that, that, that's, that's a good clarification for me because this law does respect. Our minimum size law, uh, ordinance. It's not going to mess around with it.
And keep in mind, this is only for lots that have existing buildings. That's a key. If it has, if it's a lot with an existing building, you get one, you get one A D U, whether that's your apartment above the garage, the basement, the attic, what have you. If it is a empty lot. It's different rules.
So, that's very interesting. That's a good clarification there.
So if I had a vacant lot, it's forty thousand square feet, build a house on it, I couldn't then apply. You can always apply, I couldn't get a permit to put a accessory dwelling in on that lot.
K P Cog's interpretation is that if you have an empty lot and you decide to build on it. And you decide you're going to build your main residence and an accessory dwelling unit, that lot has to be eighty thousand square feet.
Okay, and that would be fine.
Thank you, that helps a lot.
Somewhat not on topic, but. Kind of on if you wanted to build a house and have an accessory dwelling unit. Belgrade can require that the principal structure be owner occupied. Occupied if you wanted to rent out your brand new home.
Hey, can you repeat that again? The, the sound came, came out, we're here.
On an empty lot, regardless. Belgrade can require that the owner of the property live on the property in either the res, primary. Residents or the principal residents or the accessory dwelling unit.
So, so that's up to us. We, we decide. What we can do about, what we want to do about that.
Correct. You can decide if there are. You can structure your ordinance around that. If you don't want to see staircases leading down to. Main street in the village on the front of somebody's garage, you can require that they do not do that.
Where, whereabouts does it say that in the, in the law?
It doesn't.
Uh, so how do you come up with that interpretation?
Because if the law does not disallow it. It allows it.
Because si- since the law doesn't disallow it, since the law is not specific about that, then it means that we can run it which way.
And that is coming from D E C D. That is not coming just from K V cog.
All right, Hans, we have that stated somehow in other paper. You know, as an opinion.
Yeah, since they allowed, since the law doesn't require it. It means that we, we can go with it any way we want to flow it, so. This is, this is what you're saying, that we can do this or do that. We can decide how to go about it. There's, there's no requirement in the law.
Can, can, can we ask as a town? For a letter of intent or, you know, letter of interpretation or something like that. In K V cog. Dating that, you know, just to have something I'm writing.
I mean, we have draft language for ordinance updates. Are you wanting something from D E C D saying that, that we can?
Basically, yes, because I don't want the town, or myself, or anyone else on the board, or any other town going up. And saying, oh, well, we were told this and that, well, give me the proof. So. I want things right.
Are you going to be attending the open house with D E C D?
I, I don't know at this point, myself.
I, I will, and I will request that, and then there's, Brian.
Okay.
Brian, going back to your comment about the vacant lots that we can require. You know, they can build a new house, but we can require, you know, eighty thousand square feet. If we have a vacant lot, somebody builds a primary residence, okay, they don't build an A D U, they don't want one. But they sell the lot, the next owner says, hey, I need to put an A D U on here for my. You know, sick mother-in-law. How does the town say you have to have eighty thousand square feet? This law doesn't apply to you.
I don't think you can at that point. Because they were not built in concert. I'm, and again, that's where we're, we, we really do need more clarification. But my understanding is that. The permits, they need to be kind of. In time with each other. You can't wait three years and then say.
One needs to be complete before the other can be built. They can't build them both at the same time.
Right, you can't just say, oh, I changed my mind. It has to be. Because at that point, it's not.
Yeah, I don't see that being enforceable. I'm telling somebody they can't burn apartment or the garage, I'm going to build the garage, and we want them to put in this infrastructure for it. I see that, so down the road, that's a new battle there. Okay. Well, Brian, did you have the opportunity to look over the draft? Accessory dwelling unit that was. Sent by Laura Nichols.
We did, I did. So I have, I don't have that.
Brian, before we go, we move into that. So we, we wrapped Mr. Seal's document. It's all draft. Other questions there?
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't make you out, but what draft are we talking about? I've never seen a draft.
Did I send you that, Mr. Seal?
It was in an email that Sarah sent out this week.
That's got a draft ordinance in it?
It's some draft language that Lorna acquired and sent out, it looks like.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I missed that.
Yeah, I saw that. Is that what we need to do? Just use that wording and we'd be in compliance?
Unfortunately, there are, there are, there are some issues with this. Draft wording, we can use it, but we'll have to change it.
Right, but for now, that is the law, so. The way it's written, so we could, I, I guess my question is, can we just use that and, and we'd be in compliance?
The draft language?
The one that Lana sent us, yeah.
So we can make edits to that and use that, but. There were also, we need to be edits to the existing ordinances to not be contradictory.
Is this draft, a, a draft amendment to the minimum lot size ordinance or to the multi-dwelling?
From what it looks like to me, it is. I don't. See where it would fit, it could fit in either. It's simply just accessory dwelling unit language.
Because we came up with some. Well, not language per se, but we had reviewed last summer, the, we being the planning board. What other towns were doing, it was information that we got. I think Sarah, you found it from Grow Smart Maine. And we had discussed things like what our preferences might be for the number of. For like an accessory dwelling unit, the, the discussion was just that, not. Not the other section of the rules, but. The number of bedrooms. The num, the maximum floor area, gross floor area, square footage. Things of that nature. There was a, I don't know, probably, they had a list of, and this is predates this law, so this is what towns already had. You know, they're going to, a number of them are going to obviously have to be changed because they have provisions that. Are not consistent with the new law, but. The. I'm not quite sure. I, I guess we can blend that. My suggestion is we throw that into the blender, but. I, I guess I'll need to see it first, though. Sarah, is there a chance you could send that out again? I, I think it was just. Very lazy change somewhere.
She, she sent it out January sixth, and it was in the body of her email, it was not an attachment.
George, I think just forwarded it to you.
I, I thought I sent it to everybody. It was, you know, it was an email from Lorna in December, in December. And I got it and I just looked over it very quickly, but I didn't realize that she only copied me and Hans. So in the process of. Getting Mrs. Shaw in tune with all the stuff that we're going to do. We were using, I, I set up an email. Talking to her about this whole thing, and also I mentioned to the board, listen, I, I, I'm sure that none of you guys got this. Apologize and so on, and I sent it to everybody.
And, and your email's January sixth, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's not an attachment to the email, is, is I send the email and it's underneath the, the, my. Breverage in the email, the, the, there are emails attached underneath it.
Okay, I, I'll let you know if I can't find it. Hopefully I didn't have them deleted it.
I can resend it to you.
Well, Richard said he just forwarded it to you as well.
Thank you.
Nora Paul, I'm sorry about Mr. Seal. So um so Graham, you you said that we can work with that draft language and maybe uh just do a few changes in the ordinance and then wrap this up?
Yeah, I mean, I think with some work, we can edit what Lorna found. Um, it looks like in her email there was thought about putting it in the minimum lot size ordinance under the land use standards.
Yeah, that's what I read into it too.
So um I don't know if you want to close at five or five thirty. Uh, we have ten minutes to five, so um um I'm not sure if if we want to um do another meeting uh where you can you can present the suggestions to proceed with that uh language uh document. Um, and then maybe incorporate into that the discussions of Mr. uh Seal's questions and that, you know, permeate those answers into that language. Um, so I I I I dislike moving ahead without having Mr. Seal put a lot of work into uh the first summary that is out and I want to make it, make sure that everybody's comfortable moving into uh wrapping up this whole thing uh using the sample uh um a language that Lorna sent over. So um um.
So so K V Cog. We do have other language that we've been using um for town, so I mean, we'll, I'll probably end up using some of that as well.
Significantly different from what Lorna uh suggested?
There's quite a few differences. Um, this is a little out of date. Um.
Can you?
And there's just some lingering kind of clarifications and edits that would need to be made to this and then how it will interact with the current ordinances.
So if so if you in your in your in your concurrence, you have something, let's say, better than we we had than this one, can you share that one with us and then share suggestions to change the ordinances to to make compliance with the law?
So what I will do and what we, this is what we've been doing. Um, I'm gonna continue to work through the minimum lot size ordinance, the multi-family dwelling ordinance. Um, and I'll go through and make edits and add in suggestions for anything from formatting to adding paragraphs um to get into compliance. I don't want to have two separate documents because I think that might get a little confusing.
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, if you guys are all okay with it, what I like, so what we do for comprehensive planning is I send out a digital link to the document. And we have track changes enabled, so you can see what we change and what we add. And then you can feel free to make any comments as you go and read through it. And that's been the most kind of streamlined approach to going through some of these planning documents that we do. Um.
I like I like that approach. That's the approach that we've used when you you folks have helped us with um redrafting the commercial, our commercial development review ordinance and subdivision ordinance and um it allows everybody to weigh in on I mean, the devil's in the details, right? As we all know, and and so um allows us all to uh weigh in and but, you know, we're reacting to your, I mean, you're you're the expert, not us, and uh react to you um your suggestions and and modifying it for Belgrade's, you know, unique needs or maybe not.
Right, I don't want to get kind of pigeonholed into using one specific language. I don't really think it matters in the long run. Got what where, as long as we get this done and hopefully by the twenty ninth.
What what's the what um Sarah sent was um, I just had it. Um. Accessory dwelling units.
Right, and the first paragraph is pursuant to state of Maine nineteen one hundred.
Yeah, acci- accessory dwelling unit was what, so is that the only thing that we need to be in compliance with right now um with the law?
So that.
As far as I've.
Documented that first paragraph is stating is the rulemaking, so that is what helps you come into compliance with the law. Which the law is the L D two thousand and three.
Mm-hmm. But am I to understand that we're we're okay except for the um language that she sent out, which is accessory dwelling units? Is that the only portion that we need to um change?
We need to change the minimum lot size ordinance and the multi-family dwelling ordinance. Um, what is in Lorna's email, the accessory dwelling units text are amendments to an ordinance to be in compliance, I believe.
That's right.
An additional kind of guidance on development of these accessory dwelling units in the town. So that will get worked into the existing ordinances, one way or the other.
Okay.
Right, so I guess I'm here that we have a plan between now and the next meeting.
I I had, can we just, um, I I I like where we're going um and I think it's the most logical and probably the more fit, most efficient way to proceed. Um, but I I just want to get clarification on one more uh item with regard to what's in the rules that D E C D came out with. Um, and this again has to do with whether or not, what what has to be demonstrated to uh ensure that the drinking water supply for an accessory dwelling unit or for whatever the affordable housing uh dwellings are going to be is potable. And um I I just found where in those rules, I got the idea that uh we may need to require um testing for P F A's and and that's in the definition of potable. Uh, but if I understood you correctly, um uh, Grania, the uh, the uh uh we can be less stringent than that definition for what's considered a potable drinking water supply?
On that one, I believe so. Let's see.
Because because they make reference to a very specific E P A document uh or table, I should say. And, you know, I gotta believe that the legislature included P F A's because it's the hot issue of the day uh and being found in not everywhere, but uh a lot of places in agricultural areas. Uh, I don't know if any wells contaminated with P F A's have been found or even tested yet in Belgrade. Um, they may yet get a large septic spreading site, but um the uh I I just wonder how much flexibility we have. It's I guess the basic question with regard.
Oh, in the rulemaking, it states if a housing structure is connected to a well, proof of access to potable water, including the standards outlined in zero one dash six seven two C M R, chapter ten, section ten point two five, land use districts and standards, any test of existing well or proposed well must indicate the water supply is potable and acceptable for domestic use. I don't know what that standard is. Um, I'll look that up.
If I may, I think it might be as simple as adding a cost to um wherever we come up with that. If any A D U or rooms are rented, they must apply by the main state rental rules, which do require annual testing of drinking water. You can share a well, a well can serve a number of households. But there are not, there's one primary residence that can draw from that well without testing. If you rent, if if anybody else goes, you know, any rental properties um transit use, that drinking water must be tested and the results submitted. So that's that's in the main rental rules. And we know these A D Us are going to end up being rented, so I guess we leave the reference at our ordinance. Um, it is five o'clock. There is somebody else coming in to use this rule right now. And uh, Brian, I believe you're going to be in that meeting too, so we're going to disconnect with Sue and.
My marathon of Belgrade day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Brian. Nice meeting you.
It's great to meet you guys too. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Your own son, Mr. Seal?
Yep. For now.
Right. All right.